This is the script. Uh, thank you. This is the script? Yeah. Yeah, just, I cannot see the clock. Ah, there! Thank you. Just, up, just, keep on... Keep on, ano... Coaching me. The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem. Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by the Honorable Jericho Jonas Nograles.
Eternal Father, we stand here before you, united as one people, hopeful for peace in our land. We are still saddened by the losses from war, and more particularly, from the recent violence that erupted in the city of Davao. We seek your divine guidance to lead our minds and hearts to do good and realize that evil should not be reciprocated by more violence. Guide us, O Lord, to be beacons of light and bringers of hope, and may our people not be overwhelmed with the darkness of fear. Amen.
The Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the roll call.
There's a motion to defer the calling of the roll. Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The roll call is hereby deferred.
Madam Speaker, copies of the journal have been distributed to our colleagues. With that, I move that we dispense with the reading of the journal.
There's a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal. Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The motion is carried.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 17 for the session on August 31, 2016.
Any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed, let us greet the guests of the distinguished lady from the lone district of Occidental Mindoro, the Honorable Josephine Ramirez Sato. They are the following: Kentaro Toshimitsu, Usui Shok, Ching San Lin, and Tai Mai Lan.
Will the guests of the Honorable Josephine Sato please rise? Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and bills and first reading, and likewise request the Secretary General be directed to read the titles and numbers of the bills and other measures, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Will the Secretary General... Please proceed as directed.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 3361, Increasing the Bed Capacity at the Samwangka City Medical Center, Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3362, Providing for Motorcycle Lanes on All Main Roads, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3363, Amending Republic Act 9184, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 3364, Providing for the Establishment of Barangay Drug Stores, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3365, Requiring the LGUs to conduct a quarterly breast cancer detection program, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3366, Defining the Rights and Duties of Entrepreneurs, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Good Government, Reorganization, and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3367, Instituting the Former Prisoner's Employment Program, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3368, Providing for Security of Tenure, Code of Conduct, and Additional Benefit to Teachers, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3369, Deterring and Punishing the Establishment and Operation of Criminal Street Gangs, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3370, Creating a Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee of Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3371, Protecting the Filipino Children from Malnutrition, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3372, Reforming the Administrative Titling Process, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3373, Creating the Code Commission of the Philippines, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on the Revision of Laws.
House Bill 3374, Adopting a Retail Price Maintenance and Uniform Discounting Scheme in Book Trade, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3375, Omnibus Housing and Urban Development Act, Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3376, Declaring Andres Munipasos National Hero, Representative Sarate.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 3377, Establishing a Philippine High School for Spoons, Representative Villarica.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3378, Converting DPWY Sub-District Engineering Office of the Province of Kapit to a Regular District Engineering Office, Representative Loyola, Rebilia, and Barzaga.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3379, Promoting a Free Parking Policy in Shopping Malls, Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3380, Increasing the Authorized Campaign Expenditures of Candidates and Political Parties, Representative Panganiban.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 3381, Providing for the Conversion of San Emilio del Pilar Road, Representative Singzon.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3382, Establishing the Philippine Pinyang Handloom Weaving Training Center in the Clans, Representative Marquez.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3383, Providing for the Construction of the Pacific Palisades Superhighway, Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3385, Declaring the Province of Southern Lake as Tourism Zone, Representative Mercado.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3386, Absolutely Prohibiting the Use of Mines, Booby Traps, and Other Devices, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 3387, Creating Programs for Incarcerated Mothers and Their Children, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3388, Creating a National Student Loan Board, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3389, Prescribing Entrepreneurialship Education, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3390, Establishing the Academic Excellence Foundation, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3391, Establishing Three Special Education Classes, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3392, Protecting Workers and Their Families, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3393, Requiring Manufacturers or Labelers of Prescription Drugs to Report Their Annual Marketing Costs, Representative Macabala Royo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3394, Creating the National Food Service Corporation, Representative Yap Artur.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3395, Regulating the Registration of All Their Model Motor Vehicles, Representative Velasco.
To the Committee on Transportation.
Resolution, House Resolution 280, Calling for an Investigation by the Appropriate Committee to Review the Participation of Foreigners in the Ownership and Operation of National League Corporation, Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 281, Calling for an Investigation by the Appropriate Committee to Review the Implementation of the Unified Vehicleer Volume Reduction Program, Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 282, Calling for an Investigation by the Appropriate Committee to Review the Implementation of Republic Act 9184, Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 283, Commending and Congratulating the Honorable Ombudsman Conchita Capombrasales, Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 284, Calling for the Scraping of the RP USBFA and Plans to Give Temporary Access of Philippine Military Basis to American and Other Foreign Forces, Representative Sarati, Tinio, and Several Others.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Solution 285, Expressing the Recognition of Andres Munipasos, the First President of the Philippines, Representative Sarati, Tinio, and Several Others.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Solution 286, Expressing the Sense of the House to Retain the Existing Legislative Minimum Age of Criminal Responsibility, Representative Herrera D.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Solution 287, Congratulating the Justice Jose Abad Santos General Hospital, Representative Nieto and Maceda.
To the Committee on Health.
House Solution 288, Urging Mrs. Janet Napolé, the Alleged Mastermind of the Pork Barrels Cup, to Disclose to the Public Once and For All the Names of All Personalities, Representative Roque Harry.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 289, Calling for the Appropriate Committee to Investigate the Rape and Subsequent Death of OFW Ermal Edlois, Representative Cachalian.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 290, Congratulating, Commending the Ten Awardees of the Search with the Country's Outstanding Police Officers, Representative Acop Batawil, and Several Others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 291, Restoring the House Rules of the Fourteenth Congress on the Matter of Explanation of Nominal Voting, Representative Chanco.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 292, Directing the Proper Committee to Inquire the Illegal Practices in the Bureau of Immigration, Representative Vergara.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 290, Commending Police Senior Superintendent Susan Rabano Halya, Representative Bolilia.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 294, Urging the Local Water Utilities Administration to Intervene in the Alleged Mismanagement in the Distribution of Water in the Lone District of San José del Monte, Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Solution 295, Declaring the Fourteenth of June every Year's National Non-Working Holiday, Representative Sabillano.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Solution 296, Directing the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to Inquire into the Capacity of the CHED to Effectively Regulate Increases Intuition and Other School Fees, Representative Fortun.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 297, Congratulating, Commending Police Chief Inspector Ryan López Manongdo, Representative de Venecia.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 298, Condemning, in the Strongest Possible Terms, the DASRDI Terroristic Act Attack in Davao City, Representative Álvarez, Parina, Suarez, and Several Others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 299, Directing the Committee on Human Rights to Investigate the Continuing Harassment Against the Farmers Who Protested for Rice Subsidies, Representative Jesus Ambrosas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 300, Strongly Condemning the September 2, 2016, Davao City Night Market Bombing, Representative Ong Edwin.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 301, Honoring, Commending the Outstanding Teachers of 2016, Representative Álvarez, Escudero García, and Several Others.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, Letter dated 19 July 2016 of Hernando S. De Leon, Currency-Ison Integrity Office, BSP.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 27 July 2016 of Amanda Emte Tango, Junior Governor, BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated 10 August 2016 of Fernando A. Catapang, Office of the District Secretary for Maigant Workers Affairs, DAFA.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution Number 298 in consolidation with House Resolution Number 300, and also request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Secretary General is directed to read.
House Solution 298, Condemning in the Strongest Possible Terms the DASRDI Terroristic Attack in Davao City, expressing support to President Rodrigo Rova de Terte and his efforts to prevent or suppress lawless violence in the country, and extending its deepest condolences and sympathies to the families of those killed and injured.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 298 in consolidation, as consolidated with House Resolution Number 300. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended.
Session resumed.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, today being a Monday, and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Privilege hour is now open. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize the gentleman from Davao City, the Honorable Carlo Nograles, to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Carlo Nograles is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Dear colleagues, at the little past ten in the evening of Friday, the second of September, a brazen act of violence in the heart of Davao City killed fourteen innocent civilians and seriously wounded sixty-seven others. The senseless maiming and slaughter of my fellow Davauenios on that fateful Friday has been catalogued and discussed in horrifying detail in media. When the smoke cleared in the wake of the tragic bombing, a palpable sense of fear swept through Davao and the rest of the nation. Why? The Davao City bombing reminded all of us once again how utterly vulnerable we are: our children, our families, and our communities to the murderous assaults of lawless elements who are willing to commit at any cost the most heinous and barbaric of crimes without any moral hesitation and with execrable impunity in furtherance of their malevolent ideologies. Like thieves in the night, lawless elements can strike at will anytime, anywhere, without any warning, and we can never, ever be prepared to make any guarantee that no citizen will ever lose his life or suffer any injury. We are also reminded that those who died, those who were injured, and their respective families are not the only victims in this tragedy. All of us, Davauenios or not, are victims too in these terror attacks. What diminishes Davao diminishes us all. Acts of terror strip us of the rights we value most: the right to move freely and to safely engage in the lawful pursuit of activities that help us build the lives we aspire for, and the right to live free from fear for our lives, our properties, and our future against any and all threats, harm, or injury. Fear has become the most lethal weapon of choice of terrorists and other lawless elements against all of us, against all our communities. We cannot live in fear. Living in fear is living in bondage as helpless victims of lawless elements and terrorists. Madam Speaker, I therefore make this challenge: let our fears be swept away by the strength of our collective moral outrage against all forms of lawlessness, criminality, and terrorism. Let that moral courage fortify our resolve as individual citizens and as a nation to fight lawlessness, criminality, and terrorism at every turn and at all costs. The tragic bombing of the Rojas Night Market in Davao City on September 2, 2016 is not the first act of terrorism inflicted on our city and our people. There were equally, if not more, tragic bombing incidents in the past perpetrated by evil elements. Through all those past episodes of terror, Davao City has endured. Paraphrasing Invictus, Davao City was bloodied, but it remains unbowed. Davao City has not, and will not, we will never bow to fear of terrorists and criminals. We, Davauenios, will mourn and bury our dead. We will attend as best we can to the healing of our injured. We will comfort those among us in sorrow, and we will continue with greater courage to wage an unremitting war against terrorism in our beloved city. The president, a true son of Davao, has issued the strongest call to arms against lawlessness in the wake of the Davao City bombing by declaring a state of lawless violence. Using this constitutionally vested power, the president mobilized the full force of the armed forces and the police for this particular purpose. He also now exhorts the citizenry to take part in the war against criminality and lawlessness. My dear colleagues, it is our duty, and the duty of every law-abiding citizen of this country, to respond to the president's call against lawlessness. In this spirit, I filed House Resolution Number 302, condemning in strongest terms the bombing of the Rojas Night Market in Davao City on September 2, 2016, and expressing the resolve of the House to undertake appropriate legislative actions to strengthen the capabilities of local communities to fight terrorism and lawlessness. The resolution also conveys to the victims and their families the condolences of this chamber. As an affirmation of our collective commiseration and concern for the plight and welfare of the victims and their families, I propose that each member contributes a heartfelt amount from his or her salary to constitute an assistance fund to be donated to the families of the victims. I also commend my colleagues in the House who, as early as Saturday, contributed a considerable amount as donation to the victims of the Davao blast. Several members even made representations to set aside an amount in the Southern Philippines Medical Center dedicated exclusively for the victims presently confined and suffering from their mortal wounds and mental anguish. I respectfully request, Madam Speaker, that the resolution be immediately adopted by this chamber. It is the best evidence to prove that we, in this house of the people, stand with the people of Davao City in the war against lawlessness and terrorism in this country. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, dear colleagues.
The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend the privilege hour.
There's a motion to suspend the privilege hour. Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business, and please direct the Secretary General to read the number and the title of this resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Secretary General is directed to read.
Additional Reference of Business, House Resolution 302. Resolution condemning in the strongest terms the Davao City bombing on September 2, 2016 perpetrated by a terrorist group, Representative Nograles.
To the Committee on Rules.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution Number 302, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of this resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Secretary General will please read Resolution 302.
House Resolution 302, Resolution condemning in the strongest terms the Davao City bombing on September 2, 2016 perpetrated by a terrorist group.
To the Committee on Rules.
Madam Speaker, with that, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 302 in consolidation with the earlier approved House Resolutions Number 298 and Number 300. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. Motion is carried. The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Any objections? Hearing none. The privilege hour is hereby resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in the privilege speech of the Honorable Carlo Nograles, Madam Speaker. And first to interpolate is the Honorable Harry Roque. May we recognize the gentleman, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Harry Roque is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the gentleman from Davao yield a few points of interpolation?
It will be an honor, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, we begin by also conveying our sympathies to the city of Davao, and like the rest of the nation, I'd like to assure the good gentleman from Davao that this... that this representation, together with the rest of this August Chamber, stands solidly behind Davao City in renouncing this latest act of terrorism. Now, Madam Speaker, my point of interpolation, though, has to do with who are the perpetrators behind this act of terrorism? So may I know from the gentleman from Davao, preliminarily, what are the findings of law enforcement agents on who may be behind this dastardly terroristic act?
Well, Madam Speaker, the information and the data we have at this very moment, this representation has, as of the very moment, is very raw. It hasn't been really verified. What I know is also probably what many of us in this chamber know, which has been reported in various media outlets, that a certain faction or group of the so-called Abu Sayyaf has claimed the responsibility for the bombing. And there are speculations that reflect that there are other motivations behind the bombing. Speculation such as that because of the drive of the armed forces of the Philippines against this terrorist group, that they had to explode the bomb in Davao in order to divert the efforts of the AFP and divert the forces of the military who we know are in hot pursuit against these terrorist organizations. Of course, there are other information that has come to the attention of this representation, but I am doubtful on whether or not I am allowed to disclose this information while the investigations are still going on.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm thankful for this raw information relayed to this chamber by the gentleman from Davao. I myself read from the news that initial reports indicate that the terrorist group Abu Sayyaf may be behind this latest act of bombing. But, Madam President, my query has to do with the extent of foreign groups' involvement in the activities of the Abu Sayyaf. And if the gentleman from Davao is aware if this notorious terrorist group, Abu Sayyaf, has in fact merged with any foreign terrorist group as far as he knows.
Well, Madam Speaker, again, we also receive again, raw information about such coordination, cooperation between the Abu Sayyaf and other foreign terrorist organizations. But until we hear official word from either the President or the AFP Chief of Staff or the Chief of Police of the PNP or any of our officials of the intelligence community, I apologize that I would not be able to make a categorical answer and not prepared to give a categorical answer to the question of the gentleman.
Madam President, the gentleman from Davao also mentioned earlier that one possible motivation behind this latest act of terror was to deviate attention of authorities from the ongoing armed conflict in Sulu, involving also the Abu Sayyaf group. My question for the gentleman from Davao is, is he aware that the armed conflict with the Abu Sayyaf is not just limited to Sulu? And that in fact, there's now full-blown armed conflict even in the neighboring province of Basilan? As in fact, a month ago, I was physically able to visit the province of Basilan, and I heard for myself the sound of bombs and guns as they're being fired in the same municipality where I was at, in Tipo-Tipo. And apparently, this is also a full-blown armed encounter between the government and the dreaded group Abu Sayyaf. Is he aware, Madam President, that it is not just in Sulu where the notorious Abu Sayyaf group is in fact operating now?
In fact, Madam Speaker, this is really what we hope and wish to avoid, that the battle zone would be spread to other parts of the country. I know that the military and the AFP had hoped to contain the fighting and skirmishes to a particular zone only in the Philippines, or a particular part of our country. But with what happened in Davao City, this is what we hope will not happen in other parts of the country, that that the battle zone would be spread to other sensitive parts of this nation. And that is really the reason why the President has proclaimed for a state of lawless violence in order for him to call out the armed forces to augment our Philippine National Police and secure the other parts of our country from such similar other tragic occurrences.
Well, Madam Chair, in fact, the reason why I earlier inquired from the gentleman from Davao possible involvement by foreign groups is because when I visited the island province of Basilan and I met our esteemed colleague Congresswoman Akbar in Zamboanga City at the airport on my way to Basilan, I was given a briefing by no less than the governor of the province of Basilan and the mayor of Tipo-Tipo, the specific municipality where there was ongoing armed conflict, about the full-blown armed conflict in their island province. And in fact, what both the governor and the mayors told me was that the armed conflict was no longer between our government and the dreaded group Abu Sayyaf, but they referred to them already as ISIS fighters. ISIS being the notorious terroristic group that is now very much active in the Middle East. Has the gentleman from Davao heard similar reports about the Abu Sayyaf now functioning allegedly as the local franchise holder of this international terrorist group, the ISIS?
We've heard rumors to that effect, Madam Speaker. But again, I think it is not in my place to make a categorical statement on that matter. In fact, I've heard that the occurrence in Basilan wherein a group of prisoners were sprung from jail and that this group of prisoners come from the another terrorist group called the Maute might similarly also be related to the armed conflict that is happening between the military and the Abu Sayyaf and also with what happened to Davao City. In other words, Madam Speaker, we've been hearing a lot of this raw information, these gossips and rumors. And the intel community is working overtime to connect the dots. And I think very soon the President will be ready to make a categorical statement on the true state of the nation as far as these terrorist organizations are concerned.
Madam President, that is precisely my cause of grave concern. The governor of Basilan, who gave me a briefing on the ongoing armed conflict between our government and ISIS, was a former colleague in this August Chamber, having been a member of this chamber in the 15th and 16th Congresses. It is his first term to be a governor, but on the basis of the briefing that he gave me, he was very specific on his allegation that the conflict now is not just with Abu Sayyaf, but with the foreign group ISIS. In fact, the good governor even explained to me that some of those in the battlefield are now foreign nationals. And he mentioned specifically the presence of Malaysians amongst those taking part in the fighting in Basilan. This is, of course, a matter that the gentleman from Davao has said he has no personal knowledge about. I do have personal knowledge insofar as what the governor of Basilan has told me, which was repeated by the mayor of Tipo-Tipo Town where the ongoing armed conflict is happening. But my question is, given this information from individuals who have no motivation not to say the truth, would the gentleman from Davao know of any reason why the armed forces of the Philippines, for instance, until today, has denied the presence of ISIS in our country?
The... I thank the gentleman from Cabayan Partilis for his questions and for the information that he's sharing with our colleagues in the House of Representatives. But I would also like to remind the gentleman from Cabayan Partilis that no less than the President himself, when he was still mayor of Davao City, as early as then, even before the campaign period started, had already issued a statement that, in fact, ISIS is already present in the country, in the Philippines. And as I remember it, after then-mayor Rodi Duterte issued such statement, he was called upon by the past administration and cautioned against making similar or repeating the same statements. In other words, Madam Speaker, he was cautioned by the past administration from sort of repeating that statement with the fear that it might cause alarm among the citizenry. During the campaign, the presidential campaign, the President, then a candidate, was very open and transparent when he talked about terrorism. In fact, stating that terrorist groups like ISIS have in fact landed in the Philippines and already conducting their operations on the ground. So I think, Madam Speaker, it is just but a matter of time before the AFP, the PNP, and our intelligence community would issue a statement to the effect of informing the citizenry about whether or not we have come to the point where we can already say that indeed ISIS and these foreign terrorists have indeed made connections with other local terrorist groups like the Abu Sayyaf or on its own have already can already be mentioned as those responsible for the lawlessness and the violence that is happening in other parts of the country. So, right now, I think that we must all be vigilant and watchful and that we must support our AFP and our PNP in their drive, not only against the criminal elements of this country, but against any and all other terrorist organizations, whether local or foreign.
Madam President, I appreciate the candidness of the gentleman from Davao in stating that no less than the presidential candidate, the incumbent president, has expressed the fear that ISIS in fact may already be in the Philippines. And I do look forward to the leadership of this country to admitting to us the reality on the ground. It does not, in my mind, it does not serve any purpose for the administration to admit the existence of a threat from ISIS in the country if there already is in the first place. But I'd like to ask the gentleman from Davao for their point on the declaration of lawless violence. I appreciate the declaration in the context of what transpired in Davao. This declaration, after all, Madam President, is merely exercise of the powers of the chief executive to call out on the military to deal with lawless violence. And it is very clear from jurisprudence that I myself argued in the Supreme Court, the case of David versus Arroyo, that such a declaration, such an exercise of calling out powers, cannot be used to repress civil liberties. But my question, Madam President, is I'm very much bothered by newspaper reports quoting presidential spokesperson Sal Panello as saying that even prior to the Davao incident, he was already in possession of drafts declaring state of lawless violence. So my question is, would the gentleman from Davao know of any reason why, even before the Davao incident happened last Friday, no less than the presidential legal counsel has admitted, at least in media reports, that he already had drafts of the declaration for lawless violence in his possession, ready to be signed and issued by the President?
I cannot speculate on the matter, Madam Speaker. If I were to make a wild guess, I would suppose that perhaps Attorney Panello had been told about worrisome information or data gathered by the intel community that an attack was forthcoming. And so, if I had to make a wild guess, that would be my guess, Madam Speaker. But again, I cannot speak on behalf of Sal Panello, him not being a member of this chamber and me not being privy to his discussions with the President or anyone in the executive branch.
My final question, Madam President, is, in the personal opinion of the gentleman from Davao, what is the likelihood... what is the likelihood of the President further exercising his extraordinary powers as Commander-in-Chief of the Armed Forces? And I'm talking about the suspension of the privilege of writ of habeas corpus, as well as a declaration of martial law. Does he think that the exercise of these extraordinary powers may be resorted to as a result of the Davao incident?
Let me make this statement, Madam Speaker. The President is a lawyer. He used to be a prosecutor. He was a mayor for many years. He served in the halls of Congress and was a vice mayor. And let me assure the gentleman and everyone here in this August Chamber that the President, Rodi Duterte, will not exercise any extraordinary powers if it is not needed and the times do not call for it. He knows the bounds of the law. He knows his Constitution. He knows the requirements before he can exercise these extraordinary powers. And he will not use it unless it is really, truly necessary.
Well, that's all for now, Madam President. I'd like to thank the gentleman from Davao for his time and indulgence. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We thank the gentleman from Cabayan Partilis, the Honorable Harry Roque.
Thank you, the representative of Cabayan Partilis.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Buhay, the Honorable Lito Atienza, for his interpellation.
The gentleman from Buhay Partilis, the Honorable Lito Atienza is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. I just have a few questions for the gentleman from Davao, knowing his full knowledge of what happened and experiences of Davao in the different attempts at terrorism. This is not the first time that this happened in Davao. He mentioned it. Marami na pong pagtatangka ginawa sa Davao. At ang magaling na mayor nung araw ay si Presidente Duterte. Nakayanan niyang maitawid ang Davao without resorting to extraordinary emergency measures. In fact, I had the occasion to talk to him as mayor, to one mayor, and he shared with me some insights on how he was handling the situation. Would the gentleman from Davao agree that now we're facing a challenge, not only in Davao, but in the whole country? He also mentioned that. The situation could spread to all over the country. Tamapuyon.
Well, to answer the gentleman's question, I guess my simple answer would be during those times when we had the bombing at our airport in Davao and the bombing at Sasa Warf in Davao City, the President was still a mayor at that time. And therefore, he had no powers as President to call for a state of lawless violence. I would not know if the President, mayor then, made representations to the then-President asking for a declaration of lawless violence. But I would also add that perhaps the times are different now, maybe even worse. Perhaps during the airport bombing and the Sasa bombing, it was enough that a Task Force Davao, made up by the Armed Forces of the Philippines, was sent to Davao City. And in fact, Task Force Davao, or TF Davao, is still operating in Davao City as part of the anti-terrorist measures that we have to protect the city. Perhaps during the Davao City Airport bombing and the Sasa bombing, the TF Davao, their presence and their operations was enough during that time to counter any terrorist acts. But now, because of all of these speculations that we are not just dealing with Abu Sayyaf, but perhaps international terrorist organizations, then the President saw it fit to increase the level of protection, not only of Davao City, but the entire nation, by calling out the AFP and exercising his power to declare a state of lawless violence.
Madam Speaker, we wholly and fully agree with the President's action. At the outset, let's clarify that that we in the Buhay Partilis fully support the President's declaration of lawlessness in the country, that will provide him more elbow room on how to address and handle the possibly deteriorating conditions. Yes, we are in different times now than before. Tamapuyon. This will require a different approach from what a local mayor probably just did by himself during those times. To make things clear, we are in support of the decision of the President. But let me just ask the Congressman from Davao if we will agree that the effectiveness of preventing the occurrence of terrorist acts will depend greatly on effective intelligence, groundwork, community relations, and accurate communications. Would you agree with that?
I agree, Madam Speaker.
Yes, and that was exactly what Mayor Duterte narrated to me during those times when he was sharing how he was handling the conditions in Davao at that point in time. And I agreed with him. Because in Manila, at the time, we were also using effective community work in addressing the problems of criminality and possible terrorist acts. Dah meron na rin pong mga terrorist threats no mga panahong yon. Eh ngayon po ito'y laganap na, nangyari na sa Europa, nangyayari sa Asia. Eh ngayon, 99% nangyari na po rin ito sa atin, at maaring lumaganap. Ang akin pong nais tumbukin ay papaano tayo lahat nakakatulong. In a situation where no less than the President has already said this state of lawlessness that we must all confront. Now, how do we really effectively do that? Military alone? The police together with them? Or do we tap the communities, most specifically the organizations in the communities led by the local officials? Palagay ko, kung pag-uusapan po natin ang accurate assessment of actually what's going on in communities, we had to involve the mayors. And as we see it now in Davao, Congressman Nogales, and we see Mayor Duterte, Sara Duterte, act with dispatch in moving for the removal of the Chief of Police, obviously accusing him of ineffectivity. And again, we support that move because the mayor would be in the best position to take control of any chaotic situation. Well, lalapung mas higit pa sa kakayahan ng local government unit through the mayor to stabilize and to prevent possible repetition of terrorist acts. This is how we saw it in Brussels. This is how we saw it in Paris. This is how we saw it in London. When the infamous 9/11 attack on the World Trade Center buildings, we saw Mayor Giuliani handle the situation very effectively. Kaya ngayon po, eh dapat siguro bigyan natin na pansin ang ating mga local units on how they can effectively help our united efforts to combat terrorism. Because with the help of the barangays, 49,000 units of them, with the help of the panuds, 200,000 strong, and of course, led by the military and the police, aided by the civilian government, we could have a more effective preventive effort. Eto po binabanggit ko upang mapag-usapan. Kayo malalapit ka panghulong Duterte ay ipaalala natin. The mayors can play a major role and not to be sidelined by a purely police work or a purely military operation. This involves getting the minds and hearts of every individual in the community. And no one can match the capacity of the local community leaders we have to do this.
I agree, Madam Speaker. In fact, I'm sure the gentleman from Buhay Partilis knows that during the budget hearing of the DILG, no less than Secretary Sueno has shared with the members of the House his program to organize down to the community level groups or organizations that will help in counter criminality. Of course, when he made his presentation to the members of the House, the Davao bombing has not yet occurred. But with what happened in Davao City last Friday, Secretary Sueno will also involve counterterrorism as part of the efforts of the DILG in organizing our local communities, the local governments, the barangays, in our joint effort to guard against criminality, lawlessness, and terrorism in our respective districts and cities and provinces. I agree that we cannot leave it to the military alone or the police alone. I think when the President declared a state of lawless violence, it was also putting notice to the Filipino people that we have to be watchful and vigilant and play an active role in guarding against these terrorist acts. So I agree with the observations made by the gentleman from Buhay Partilis that we have to get our communities involved. If we can do it down to the puruk level in our localities, all the more, the better, Madam Speaker.
Salamat po, Madam Speaker. This must be the best time to discuss this particular nagging issue. How do the local officials, particularly the mayors, work effectively with the police? I cite, for instance, in Cebu, where the mayor was stripped of all his connections with the local police, and to which Congressman Del Mar of Cebu objected too and very vehemently spoke against it. And his representation also agreed with Congressman Del Mar. But that doesn't seem to be called for. It's an uncalled-for action, and definitely it's not in line with effective combating of criminality. If you remove the mayor from the picture, then you have nothing but the police action and not accountable to the people at all. The mayors, remember, are elected, and they are accountable to their communities in fighting anything, criminals, drug addicts, drug pushers. If the mayor is doing his job, he would be the best man on the job. But the police alone cannot do the job equally as that of an accountable officer. Ang principyo po rito, accountability. Kung lahat ng mga mayors ay accountable at nagtatrabaho, ang pulis magiging mas efficient. Pero 'yung pulis lamang at nagsasabing ako accountable, eh hindi pwedeng maging kasing accountable ng mayor yun dahil hindi siya dumadaan sa halalan. Elections are still the best inspiration for a better performance for all of us in government, whether civilian, police, military. We have to be accountable, to be motivated, and to be doing better than the ordinary. Do you believe in that principle, Congressman Nogales, that the mayors should not be stripped of any control or supervisory authority over his police force because he is the most accountable official in his area and nobody else?
I would agree with that, Madam Speaker. In fact, I would like to add that President Duterte, when he was mayor of Davao City, had very close coordination with the Philippine National Police. And they created an environment wherein even the local barangay officials and barangay wards would directly share information to the mayor. And the mayor would vet the information and data and share this with the police. So each and every barangay police would report directly to the barangay capitan, and the barangay capitan reports directly to the mayor. And all of the information that they gather in their respective barangays and the mayor could immediately vet the information using his powers and his resources and share the same information with the police chief of the city. In the same manner, the police chief commanding all his police officials, wherever they may be, down to the police station, would also be able to gather the information and data and share it with the mayor. So I agree with the statement of the gentleman from Buhay Partilis that there should always be proper coordination and cooperation between the local government unit headed by the mayor of the locality and the police chief who holds this jurisdiction in that area, Madam Speaker.
We're very gratified to listen to the gentleman from Davao agreeing with our observation that for all of us to be more effective, we have to give the local officials the kind of responsibility and authority that they should be able to use in performing their task. But what worries me now is the direction that some senators seem to be taking. They are saying mayor should be totally out of the picture and get the police totally independent of the local government unit. To me, when I read that, I told myself, these people don't even know what they're talking about. Because you cannot accuse the local government level of ineffectivity simply because one mayor was involved in the drug problem. I'm talking about Mayor Espinoza. If the drug problem has deteriorated in our country to this level of inferno, we must pinpoint it's not the mayors who are at fault. It was the law enforcement sector. I'm talking about the police now. Kung sumama na sumama ang lagay natin sa droga, ang pulis hindi nagtrabaho, hindi po 'yung mayor. Kung meron mang mayor na nasangkot katulad ni Mayor Espinoza, ikulong. Marusahan. Pero isa po 'yan, isa sa isang libo pitundaang mayors. Tamantala, limang general ang sinabi ng ating panghulo kasangkot sa droga. Ilan po ba general meron ang pulis? Ilan po ba general meron ang pulis natin? Iilan lang, pero lima ang kanyang tinuran, tinuro. Ibininyag, merong nalalaman sa droga at nakikipagunayan sa drug laws. O sino po talaga ang pwedeng pinta saan? 'Yung isang mayor, isang libo pitundaan? O 'yung lima? Sa marahay, wala pa limampung general. So what we're saying is that we will have to speak against this Senate action blaming everything on the mayors to a point where they may not be properly appreciated in our fight against terrorism. On the other hand, we cannot also say all policemen and all police officers were involved in sinanigans, no. I know there are many, many police generals who have really extended themselves to fight crime and there are ordinary patrolmen, policemen, who have also offered their lives to protect ours. But to say that the local officials should be removed from the picture is tantamount to saying Mayor Giuliani was not effective. It's practically saying the mayor of Brussels was not effective, the mayor of London was not effective, and the mayors who have already done their best in our country are also not effective. Kaya sa takdampan noon, ay pag-uusapan po ng bansa ito. Dahil kung itutuloy nila 'yung kanilang panukala, eh kami po naman ay kokontra dun. Hindi pwede 'yung elected official ang walang say. Siya ang pinakamalaking responsibility at kinakailangan siya ang nangumuna sa ating paglaban sa criminality, whether it's the drug problem, criminality, lawlessness, terrorism especially, the mayors will have to be harnessed by the President. I know in his heart, in his mind, in his vast foundation of fighting crimes in Davao as 20 years mayor, he knows what he's talking about. I hope he's not influenced by two gentlemen now working along this line. Removing the mayors from active police involvement because they themselves, I'm talking about General De La Rosa, who was handpicked by the former mayor of Davao, Davao now President Duterte. Kung hindi siya kilalaan ang ating panghulo, hindi siya General De La Rosa ngayon. And Senator Ping Laxson, who was a former chief PNP. Kung hindi rin siya pinikatiwalaan 'yung panghulung erap, ay palagay ko, hindi siya senador ngayon. Ako'y nalulungkot, ayun dalawang benepisiaryo ng kaalaman ng civilian government na nabigyan ng pagkakataon magtrabaho sa mas malawa na paraan bilang pulis ang magsasalita na hindi dapat nakikilab ang civilian government. Palagay ko, kung hindi sila napili ng mga panghulo ng panahon nila, General De La Rosa ay nasa ibaba po ng ranggo ito eh. Ang dami po mga senior sa kanya. Ngayon siya ang chief PNP. Why? Because Mayor Duterte, now President Duterte, handpicked him and that's giving him all the opportunity to now do his best. Senator Laxson was handpicked by President Erav at that time. Kung hindi, marating ma-senior sa kanya. He was able to do his job effectively and now he is a re-elected senator even. So to hear them now say that the civilian government, local government in particular, should not have a say in police matters is practically removing 2/3 of the effectiveness of the democratic system in our land. As I mentioned, democracy thrives in effective representation of the people in government. Whether we congressmen or mayors, when we get elected, we do our best. While policemen are professional law enforcers. They have their own mandate, they have their own training, but they have to work with the duly elected officials, otherwise they could go in many directions bringing along our beloved nation. Kailangan po nating ituwid ang ating pananaw sa effectibong paglaban sa kasamaan. Terrorism is now, as you said, rearing its head in our country. And all of us, elected congressmen and elected mayors, governors, chairman, kagawad, tanud, we should all work together to fight it. We will not allow the criminals to prevail. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you Congressman Negrales for opening up the matter and bringing it here because we have to discuss this openly and agree on a common solution.
Thank you Congressman Atsensha.
We thank the Honorable Lito Atsensha, a former mayor himself and now champion for all local officials, more particularly the local chief executives. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege hour. This is to give way to the roll call and after that, we will resume with the interpolations. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to suspend the privilege hour. Are there any objections? The chair hears none. The privilege hour is suspended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Atsaron. Akok. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Akbar. Albano. Alcala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alontenagiat. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensha. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batokabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Jose Cristoper. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Bilyones. Viron. Bulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtan. Kagas. Calderon. Calixturbiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casafrans. Casafredenil. Katanko. Cayetano. Celeste. Seráfica. Ciriles. Chaves. Chupeco. Co. Coango. Juliantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisólogo. Cuah. Cuaresma. Cueva. Dalipe. Daloc. Daza. De Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. Dima Por Abdullah. Dima Por Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Giuseppeo. Ivardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Florrendo. Flores. Fortún. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Gwendolin. García Jose. García Albano. Gari Richard. Gari Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzales Alexandria. Gonzales Aurelio. Gonzales Fernando. Goriseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alosos. Javier. Co. Congun. Labat Labat. Laxson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Liachon. Lee. Limcaichong. Lubrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magododato Suarto. Magododato Sagit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marinho. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mendín. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Negrales Jerico. Negrales Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaon. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Hong Edwin. Hong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panginiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Permisiya Segabas. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relámpagos. Revilia. Robapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque Harry. Roque Roelio. Saktalan. Segarberia. Sahali. Celceda. Salimbagon. Salo. Salón. Sanbar. Sandobal. Santos Repto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Savillano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Rasho. Suárez. Si Albarado. Tambunting. Tanangelina. Tanmilagrosa. Tansherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabi Nataman. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Caterra. Veloso. Vergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villerasa Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mylesio. Yap Victor. Yu. Semora Marcarmen. Semora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 246 members responded to the call.
With 246 members responding to the call, the chair declares a quorum. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
There's a motion to resume the privilege hour. Any objections? The chair hears none. Privilege hour is resumed.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in the privilege... we are in the privileged speech of the gentleman from Davao City, the Honorable Carlo Nograles. May we again recognize the gentleman, Madam Speaker?
The Honorable Carlo Nograles is recognized.
I am ready, Madam Speaker. Next to interpolate, Madam Speaker, is the gentleman from Magdalo. Let us recognize the Honorable Gary Alejano.
The Honorable Gary Alejano of the Magdalo Partilist is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to everyone. I just would like to ask the Honorable Carlo Nograles if he is willing to receive some questions and clarification from this representation.
I will be honored, Madam Speaker.
Before I proceed, I would like to greet the Honorable Carlo Nograles. A belated happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman Alejano.
But of course, I would like to relay my sympathy to Davao City. Nakikiramay po ako dun sa mga biktima, sa mga namatayan at saka mga nasugatan. I just would like to ask the Honorable Nograles if certain information were received by the police or the military of the impending bombings in the city of Davao?
Madam Speaker, I was only able to watch certain interviews on TV or I heard over the radio that there were some personalities who said, who mentioned that they were in receipt of that, of information that an attack was forthcoming. But we are not, we're sort of, not to make excuses, but we are used to hearing these threats every now and then, not only in Davao City but in other areas as well. In fact, it is not unusual for schools and universities, halls of justices, to every now and then receive threats, bomb threats, or threats against about an forthcoming or threats that, you know, an attack or a bomb is planted in their respective buildings. So what I'm trying to drive at is that it's not unusual that some personalities, whether in the local government or in the Philippine National Police, would come across these certain information. In fact, even ordinary Filipino citizens every now and then would receive information in their cellphones about an impending attack or a bomb that will explode here or there or to avoid this certain establishment or that certain establishment. So the information comes and goes, Madam Speaker. And it is really up to the intelligence community, the Philippine National Police and our government authorities to investigate as soon as possible time in the quickest and swiftest manner the veracity of these reports.
Thank you, Honorable Nograles. I understand that you've seen interviews and reports that information was received. I myself have seen such kind of report. Would you, would you know, Honorable Nograles, if the local police and military have done precautionary measures in order to thwart such bombings in the city of Davao?
Well, learning from what happened in the Davao Airport bomb blast and the Sasa Warf bomb blast in the past years, Madam Speaker, we have what you call a Task Force Davao that was organized by the AFP to augment the efforts of the Philippine National Police to counter terrorism in the city of Davao. And obviously, apart from that, the PNP and Task Force Davao have been constantly roaming the city of Davao, making their presence felt and visible. The barangay leaders in every barangay have, and our, the respective barangay police have been trained by the PNP. There is coordination between the barangays and the Philippine National Police in terms of reporting any unusual activities, not only criminal activities or drug-related activities, but terroristic activities as well. So there is this ongoing coordination between the AFP, the PNP, the mayor's office and its respective offices and the barangay. The barangays down to the community level. All in coordination and close cooperation in order to avert a repeat of what happened in the Davao Airport and the Sasa Warf bombing. But again, this is not to make excuses, even despite all its vast intelligence operatives and equipment, despite all the preparations by even first world countries like the United States, Paris, Belgium and other European countries. It just seems to me, Madam Speaker, that when terrorist organizations have in their mind the objective of creating and sowing terror, I suppose any small opportunity that they find, they will take advantage of just like what happened in Davao City on that fateful night of Friday, September 2.
I understand, Honorable Nograles, that people from Davao were receiving threats before and even now. But I also understand that we are providing funds for our PNP and our armed forces in order for them to perform their mandates. Is it correct that the city director of Davao and the task force commander of Davao were relieved of their position?
I received reports to that effect, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Nograles. I just would like to point out that even in the past major military operations in Mindanao, there is this tendency or one of the tactics of the Abu Sayyaf and other terrorist organizations to conduct diversionary attacks in other areas in order to divert the attention of government and to sow fear among the people. Have you heard about this in the past, Honorable Nograles?
I believe the representative from Magdalo Partilist is more knowledgeable about military tactics and with his experience in the battlefield. But yes, this representation, and I think many of our colleagues believe that what happened in Davao City was part of the diversionary strategy or tactic being employed by the terrorist organization in order to relieve the pressure being put by the armed forces of the Philippines against their comrades in certain parts of the country. We know that the AFP is on a total all-out offensive against this terrorist organization and group. But as I earlier shared with you, we would have wanted to contain the battle only to a certain portion of the country. But we cannot discount the fact that there may be members of their group in other parts of the country and even sympathizers in other parts of the country as well. And I believe that the intelligence community, both in the PNP and the AFP and even under the Office of the President, is working double time to identify these sympathizers and other members of that organization or other terrorist organizations and monitoring their movements so no similar attacks may, will be done in other parts of the nation while the AFP and PNP are on hot pursuit against these terrorist groups.
The issue of terrorism conducted especially by Abu Sayyaf should be properly addressed. And that I support that once and for all, we put a stop to the activities of Abu Sayyaf down there, down there in the south. However, I would like to inform also our colleagues that in the past, there were so many military operations, all-out war operations against Abu Sayyaf. I was involved in some of those operations in Basilan and in Sulu. At masasabi kong military operations alone would not solve the problem. Halos mapuno po ang isla ng Basilan, ng Sulu, ng dami ng sundalo. Inakita ho natin 'yung send-off ng mga sundalo from other areas of the country going to Mindanao. At naiisip ko lamang na marami namang buhay ang malalagas. And yet, I am not that confident that we will be able to solve the problem in Mindanao, specifically Abu Sayyaf. Why? Dahil po 'yung kidnapping na issue has become a lucrative business or industry in Basilan and Sulu. And I want to share to the body, to our colleagues, na hindi po lamang ang mga Abu Sayyaf ang nakikinabang hudyto or involved sa kidnapping activities. This has been going on so many years now and that even the community itself is involved in this kind of activities. Isy money for them. Kaya ho, kung titingnan lang ho natin sa perspektibo ng combat operation to solve the problem, hindi po ito matatapos dahil ang kahirapan ay nandoon pa rin. Ang kakulangan sa education, ang pagmulat ng mga mata ng ating mga kapit doon sa tunay na kalagayan ng ating bansa and the real opportunities for them, kung wala, hindi po natin masosolve ang problema. Plus the fact na ang bansang Pilipinas ay isa sa may pinakamahabang coastlines in the world. Marami po ang pwedeng pasukan at labasan ng tinatawag po nating terrorists. Hindi po kayang i-cover ng ating Philippine Navy, ng ating Coast Guard, ang mga areas na ito. And furthermore, kulang ho tayo sa kagamitan upang i-monitor ang movement ng pumapasok at lumalabas sa mga isla. Kaya ang experience ho namin in the past, pag nagkaroon ng pressure dun sa mga isla na yan, those involved will just escape and visit other areas like San Buanga Peninsula at hintay na matapos ang combat operation and then babalik ho sila. Kaya pabalik-balik ho ang problema. Nagiging topic na rin ho yan sa bangsa morobasic law. If we will not address the real causes of the problem, we are deemed to repeat the problems. Yun nga po, ang aspeto na yan kasama ho dyan ang economy, development, education, cultural issues and governance issues. Kaya, I am afraid, my dear colleagues, Honorable Nograles, that we will be able to achieve our objective of once and for all putting a stop to the problem of Abu Sayyaf in Basilan and Sulu. Would you agree with that, Honorable Nograles?
Well, Madam Speaker, I acknowledge that the problem is more complex if you go deeper into it. If you look at the root cause and the core of all of this, it transcends just what people believe to be something evil. And there are a lot of underlying problems present that exacerbates the situation just like what Congressman Alejano said. You have poverty, you have the economy, you have kidnapping as a lucrative practice, plus of course, the brainwashing done by those with malevolent ideologies. So I admit that the solution should not only be one that is a military solution, but something that involves and has to involve, has to involve the presence of government aid, assistance and more support, especially to the impoverished communities. But at the same time, what is important right now is that the perpetrators must be brought to justice. And the sympathizers of the perpetrators must be held accountable as well. As stated by our police chief, General Bato, hindi dapat tayo ang matakot sa kanila. Hindi dapat sila ang dapat matakot sa gobyerno. So if terrorists use, if terrorists use fear as their weapon of choice, then I think this government's mode of attack is that we should not be the ones fearful of them, but they have to be the ones fearful of government. But at the same time, because the problem in all its complexity has as its root cause poverty, then government must also at the same time address the root cause by providing for the needs of those impoverished communities, providing them healthcare, schooling, education, livelihood, that they feel the presence and aid and pagmamahal at pag-aruga ng gobyerno ito. Kasi pag hindi natin sila sinama at hindi nila nararamdaman na kasama sila sa gobyerno natin o sa bansa natin, mas madaling i-brainwash po sila na isipin na kalaban nila ang gobyerno.
Thank you, Honorable Nograles. My next question is about the issue of ISIS in the country. It was mentioned in the interpolation of Honorable Atsensha. Would you, would you have the knowledge of the existence of ISIS in the Philippines?
Gaya po ng sinabi ko kay Congressman Harry Roque during his interpolation. Noon pa man, nung mayor pa si President Duterte at hindi pa siya tumatakbo bilang presidente, ay naibanggit na niya, nasabi na niya na meron na pong presence ang ISIS dito sa bansa. At nabanggit na po niya na meron pong mga Pilipino, kapwa nating Pilipino, na dinala na pong nila abroad para po sa training at kung ano pa man. na dinala na po nila abroad para po sa training at kung ano pa man. Pero nung siya po ay nakapagbanggit nito at nareport po niya ito sa taong bayan, 'yung nakarang administrasyon ay nikapakita daw po sa kanya at sinabihan daw po siyang, "Huwag na muna magsalita tungkol dyan." At dahil siya po ay isang munting mayor lamang, eh sumurut naman siya sa iniuto sa kanya ng past administration. Pero nung pagdating nung panahon na siya na po ay nanghangandidato bilang pangulo, eh naging transparent po siya at panahiwatig niya at sinabi niya, sa taong bayan, binilik niya po 'yung issue na 'yun na kinakailangan ang mas agresibong paraan ng pagsubpo ng terrorismo dahil po ang ISIS, eh nandito na po ang kanilang presensya sa ating bansa at pinaparamdam na po sa taong bayan. Ngayon po dahil sa nangyari sa Davao City, pinag-uusapan na naman po itong bagay na ito. So, if you ask me, Congressman Alejano, I highly suspect that the presence of ISIS in the country is already in fact true.
Thank you, Honorable Nogales. I agree that we should know the issue, the bottom of this, so that the people will be properly informed. I am just worried about the creation of undue panic to the populace of our country when we say that ISIS is all around us in the country already. Gusto ko lang ho i-share ang aking pananaho dito. Marami ho tayong grupo sa Mindanao. Ang Abu Sayyaf ho actually ay hindi naman ho iisa 'yan and I doubt kung talagang merong totoong Abu Sayyaf ngayon. Sa central Mindanao, maraming grupo din po doon. Oo, ang mabanggit na rin natin 'yung MAOTI groups sa Lanau del Sur, 'yung BIFF sa Magindanao at sa Sultan Kudarat, marami na po. Sa katunayan, meron na mga operations conducted against these groups and they were able to capture the flag of ISIS sa mga kampo po nila. Pero 'yung nakikita ho natin dito, dahil naka-ankor sa paghanap ng pera o sources ang ito mga grupong ito, at nakita ho nila 'yung grupong ISIS sa Middle East ay may kontrol ng oil at merong perang nagagamit, they are using that opportunity to raise funds for their group. Ang ginagawa ho nila, gagawa ng flag ng ISIS kasi parang patches ng huwag 'yun eh. Abu Sayyaf papalitan ko ng patch ng ISIS. Pwede kong gawing kaagad 'yun. In order to attract and get the attention of those people in the Middle East that there were sympathizers in the Philippines, they will capture their activities like beheading of their victims. So to show to the ISIS people in the Middle East that they have sympathizers in the Philippines. And in that way, they would be able to get fundings from the Middle East. But I want to point out na itong mga taong ito ay dati ng namumugot ng ulo, dating ng nakikidnap, dati ng nagpapasabog ng mga bomba dito sa Pilipinas. So pag iisipin ho natin, wala ho bago dyan sa mga threats na hinaharap ho natin. Ito na rin ho 'yung mga dating nagasik ng lagim dito sa Pilipinas. Ang gusto lang natin mairelate sa taong bayan na huwag ho kayong mag-panic dahil wala ho aktwal na parang mga puersa ng ISIS coming from Middle East landing directly to the island of Mindanao upang magasik ng lagim. Ito po 'yung mga sympathizers na nagahanap ng suporta from other countries in order to perpetuate their illegal activities. So yun po 'yung aking kaalaman and I hope na hindi ho siya mag-create ng panic and that our armed forces and the PNP should really investigate the issue so that they can properly brief our president and the appropriate actions to be taken against them, Honorable Gonzalez, Carlo Nogales. I will ask the next question. Are you in favor of, or is it necessary for the president to declare the state of lawlessness or the state of lawless violence?
I think, Madam Speaker, it is within the constitutional prerogative of the president to do so. I think because of what happened to Davao City and perhaps all of the intelligence reports that comes his way now that he is the president, it was a reaction necessary for him to make. Obviously, we all understand that it does not suspend the operation of the Bill of Rights. It is not martial law. It is not a suspension of the writ of habeas corpus. We can see that we can go on with our day-to-day lives except that with this declaration, the president can now and has indeed called out the armed forces of the Philippines to augment the forces of the Philippine National Police to safeguard and secure our nation and its citizenry from any other further attacks. I think the declaration was proper. The declaration was legal. And I support the declaration pronounced by the president.
Thank you. I am not a lawyer and actually, a lot of people were asking on the real meaning of this declaration of state of lawlessness dahil po hindi ho alam ng karamihan kung ano ba ho ito. And when I tried to research on it, I found out that it is within the powers of the president to declare such state of lawless violence. If there is an existing violence, invasion, or rebellion in the country, the president has all the right to declare such declaration. However, I just would like to point out that even if the president will not declare or did not declare the state of lawlessness, the armed forces right now is in fact cooperating with the Philippine National Police. I would like to point out, our Republic Act, I think 6975 and Republic Act 8551, it says there that the primary responsible agency of the internal security operations of the country falls on the shoulder of the armed forces of the Philippines. Hindi po sa Philippine National Police. Kaya nga, nakikita ho natin meron tayong task forces in different areas in Davao, Task Force Jensen, Task Force San Buanga, we have that task forces all over the country. At sa katunayan po, the armed forces in the PNP have been conducting joint operations in almost all parts of the country. Kaya nga, even without the declaration, nangyayari na po ang pag-call sa ating armed forces to cooperate with our Philippine National Police. Ang aking pagkaintindi, kung bakit merong ganon provision in calling out the armed forces to support the Philippine National Police is that the traditional role of the armed forces is externally oriented. Its mandate is territorial to protect our territorial integrity and the preservation of our sovereignty. So externally oriented po ang ating armed forces. However, if there are situations internally that the Philippine National Police could not handle, the president could call on the armed forces to assist the Philippine National Police to quell any rebellion, invasion, or any lawless violence. Kasi ho, ang primary mandate to the armed forces is about warfighting. Yun po ang training ng ating armed forces. And ang isang worry ho natin dyan, if it will reach to a point that members of the armed forces are already involved in the so-called Operation Tokhang, because it says there that the armed forces will assist the Philippine National Police in operations including anti-drug operations. Kung mangyari po 'yan, ang training ho ng ating armed forces ay search and destroy. Pag ginamit ho natin 'yan sa operations like that, I'm afraid that the number of violence will increase. And you have mentioned that the writ of habeas corpus was not suspended. And there shouldn't be any arrest without warrants of arrest. However, alam naman ho natin ngayon na 'yung mga suspect ng drug-using and pushing ay nakalista lang ho, wala naman ho silang warrant of arrest. Listahan lang po at tinatarget ho sila. There were no warrants of arrest given. So that is why, meron na rin, kaya nga ako worried because there were alleged violations of human rights and alleged arrest without the warrants. Kaya nga ho, dapat ho tingnan ho natin dahil ang Philippine National Police are trained to conduct such law enforcement functions. The armed forces are not trained to do that. That is why, we should be very careful in using our armed forces because the moment we will see members of the armed forces patrolling the urban areas, then it will raise unnecessary panic to our populace. Nangyayari po 'yan, example sa Cotabato, nagpapatrol 'yan na ho dati, na involved din ho ako. Fully armed members of the armed forces, the Marine Corps, patrolling the streets. Nagkicreate ho tayo ng senaryo na meron na hong uncontrollable violence in such that we are now employing the armed forces to quell such lawless violence, Honorable Nogales.
Yes, Madam Speaker, Congressman Alejano has understood it perfectly. That is the reason why the Philippine National Police belongs under the ambit of the DILG, Department of Interior. Because the PNP is supposed to safeguard our interior security while the AFP is external, PNP is internal. And therefore, the reason why this is written in the Constitution is if the PNP, if the lawless violence has reached such a point wherein the PNP cannot by itself already suppress the lawless violence, then the president in his power as commander-in-chief can call out the armed forces to augment the forces of the Philippine National Police. Kaya nga po, during the interpolation, during the privilege speech, and even when I'm asked by the media, I always make it a point to state that the president called out the armed forces to augment the Philippine National Police. And therefore, realistically, theoretically, what should handle, what should happen is that the PNP still takes the lead in safeguarding our internal security. And the AFP is just there to augment the police force. Dahil tama po 'yung sinasabi ni Congressman Alejano, iba po ang training ng armed forces, iba po ang training ng PNP. Ang PNP alam na alam nila 'yung mga prohibition against warrantless arrests, alam nila 'yung mga prohibition against warrantless seizures and searches. Memorize po nila 'yan. Kaya nga po, pagdating sa internal security, pag-safeguard ng ating citizens, it really has to be the PNP na mangunguna, who will take the lead sa pag-safeguard 'yan. Ang AFP po, dahil kinallout na po ng presidente, nandyan lang po 'yan to augment and support the PNP in its drive against the lawless violence or the terrorism that is happening in the country, first off, foremost, 'yung nangyari po sa Davao City. Ngayon, kami po sa Davao, nung nangyari po 'yung bombing sa airport, pati sa Sasa Warf. Ang pinakaunang hiningi ni Mayor Rody Duterte that time was for the creation of this Task Force Davao made up of the military to augment the Philippine National Police. And it worked. Kami po sa Davao, nung nakita namin 'yung creation ng Task Force Davao ng mga military at nakita po namin that they were patrolling the streets, conducting checkpoints, being even present sa mga commercial establishments, it gave Davauenios a sense of security. Kumbaga, Madam Speaker, 'yung ginawa ni Mayor Duterte noon worked in the city of Davao. And since then, no such attack, similar attack, happened in Davao City since the creation of the Task Force Davao. Helping the PNP, patrolling the streets, conducting anti-terrorism measures and operations. Ngayon, until, nangyari ngayon, 'yung September 2 na bombing. So, ang nais ko lang pong sabihin is that it worked in Davao City for so long and I think the president using that experience and now that he is president, wanted to do it in a grander scale. Na using his constitutional powers to call out the armed forces, ginawa na lang po niya sa buong bansa, 'yung ginawa niya sa city of Davao at that time after the bombing in the airport and the Sasa Warf. So, I think that because the formula worked in Davao, na nakikita namin 'yung mga military and the Philippine National Police officers patrolling the streets together, working hand in hand and seeing more and more of them raising their visibility and presence in all over the city, I think if we are able to duplicate and replicate the same in other parts of the country, kung saan medyo sensitive or we have information na could be the next target, then I think it would be very effective in thwarting, forestalling, stopping, halting, and destroying any plans of any terrorist organization to once again sow fear in the hearts of the Filipinos.
Before proceeding any further, I believe we have overextended the privilege hour. So may I call on the majority floor leader, please?
Madam Speaker, I just have one issue.
We can first...
With the indulgence of the gentleman, because the privilege hour has already expired and we only have one hour under the rules. So with that, Madam Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour for another one hour, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to extend the privilege hour for another hour. Any objections? Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Gentlemen from the Magdaleno Party list, will please continue.
Thank you po, Madam Speaker.
Just as gentle reminder to our esteemed colleague and my good friend, the honorable Gary Alejano, he will kindly address his questions to the chair.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you po. On the statement of duplicating or applying what happened in Davao to in a national scale, I'm afraid, Madam Speaker, that we're going to displace the forces of the armed forces in their traditional deployment areas. And we know for a fact that the number of our armed forces depended on the number of security threats that our country are facing right now. And if we have...
And if we have to use them to, example, conduct anti-drug operation in urban areas, I'm afraid that we're going to leave some sensitive areas vacant. But nonetheless, Madam Speaker, I would like to ask Honorable Nogralis the next question, Madam Speaker. Is the Honorable Nogralis aware of a document or documents called National Security Policy and National Security Strategy?
Yes, Madam Speaker, but my briefing with NICA and the other intelligence communities is scheduled still on Wednesday, so I will, that's the time that I will be able to peruse those documents.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, because every administration should have its own national security policy, that means a general policy direction for the country and the national security strategy that will clarify the policy in achieving national security objectives based on the means or the resources available to the country. I mention that, Madam Speaker, because without that clear national security policy, then we will just have to react every time there's an issue coming up.
Wala hon tayong long-term direction, security direction. Sa katotohanan po, isa 'yung dahilan kung bakit hon nagrebeldyo ang grupo Magdalo. Dahil paulit-ulit hon namamatayan ang ating mga sundalo at police, hindi hon atin naachieve ang ating objective because of the unsustainability of policies. Isang Presidente, ito 'yung direction, ang sunod na Presidente, ito 'yung direction. Kaya nga po, kailangan hon ito, because this is holistic. We will not just react to a certain situation, then after that situation die down, we will go back to our normal ways without really looking at the security, the threats to national security in the country. Nabanggit ko eh, Madam Speaker, because even high cabinet officials of the country are not aware of their role in achieving national security objectives. I will just mention one department, which was mentioned kanina po, noon interpolation, the Department of Interior and Local Government. Hindi lamang high cabinet officials ang hindi nakakaalam ng national security policy and strategy, kundi pati na rin ang ating local government chief executives, mula sa governor at sa kasa Mayor. Why? Because the national security policy is composed of two aspects, the internal one and the external one. Doon po sa internal, ito 'yung pinapatupad sana ng ating armed forces, 'yung internal peace and security plan. It should be owned up by the President, not only by the armed forces. And that, marami hon report ang ating armed forces of local government officials helping the so-called enemies of the state. Paano hon atin mareresolve ang ating problema sa seguridad? Kung unang-una, hindi hon alam ng ating mga government officials kung ano ang threats to national security at ano ang roles nila sa pag-achieve ng national security objective. Pangalawa, hindi lang nila alam, tumutulong pa sila doon sa tinatawag nating enemies of the state. Kaya I agree with Honorable Atsensha that the local government officials, especially the mayors and governors, should be in the forefront in achieving peace, in achieving and maintaining peace and order in their respective areas. Actually, in the Local Government Code of 1991, Republic Act 7160, they are the primary responsible persons in maintaining peace and order in their areas. Now, I hope, Honorable Nogralis, that the national security policy of the present administration should not be just a paper. Na naiiwan po doon, hindi binabasa, hindi alam kung ano ang lama noon. Nakakalungkot po, 'yung New People's Army, malaki pa po ang pundong nakukuha sa ating armed forces sa ibang lugar. Paano hon atin madidefeat ang kalaban? Tinatawag hon ating enemies of the state, kung mismong mga mayors ang nagbibigay ng haven, protection, and support sa mga ito, and yet, hindi po sila inaaccount sa kanilang violate their oath, violation of their oath to Constitution. Kaya, Honorable Nogralis, my colleague, considering the fact that you are also the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, I propose that the Executive Department should submit to Congress, because it is our job to make sure that they are performing their mandates, submit documents such as the National Security Strategy, the National Defense Strategy from the National, from the Department of National Defense, and the National Military Strategy for the Armed Forces of the Philippines, so that members of Congress would be informed on what should be undertaken by these agencies, so that we can support them in terms of funding, allocation of funding. Kasi sasabihin, oh, ulan hon kami sa pundong, hindi namin masuportahan, hindi hon atin alam na 'yun palang problema hon nila. So, I think it is also right, the right time for us to demand from our Executive Department such document, including that of the Philippine National Police, what is their grand strategy in addressing drug problems in the country? Kasi hon, kung susulput-sulput lang hon tayo na pag-address, at ang tinitingnan ay ang mag-surrender lang, mag-surrender, and we don't have any plans for them, to rehabilitate them, then we are deemed to see the problems coming again and again, Honorable Nogralis.
Yes, Madam Speaker, in fact, we would all remember that immediately after the President's State of the Nation address, few days after his sauna, he immediately convened the National Security Council wherein no less than four former Presidents attended to shared light to contribute their experience on matters of national security, and wherein this current administration would be able to build up on their gains from their respective administrations, and synchronize with their efforts, and come up with a grand strategy on national security. Again, as I said, the NSC is set to brief this representation, and I shall include in my questions to the National Security Council the plans and proposals being asked for by the Honorable Congressman Alejano. As far as the DILG and their anti-drug campaign is concerned, I'm sure the good gentleman from Part List Magdalo was present during the DILG presentation of the budget to the Committee on Appropriations wherein they elucidated and explained their strategy against drugs, their anti-drug campaign, and their plans in the next year and the succeeding years in order for them to sustain their efforts in this war against drugs. The Department of National Defense will be facing the Committee on Appropriations on September 14, for them to present as well their budget to the members of the House, and I think on that day, we can also request for the DND to submit their plans and strategies as far as the military campaign against external threats and the security of our coun, security of our country is concerned.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we graciously request the gentleman and all of our colleagues that when speaking in the plenary, to at all times address the Honorable Speaker, because it is a matter of decorum.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, actually, I have no more questions for Honorable Nogralis. I would like to thank you for this opportunity. Honorable Nogralis, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask questions to yourself. So, once again, thank you, Good afternoon.
Thank you, Congressman Alejano, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Majority Leader.
Next, to interpolate, Madam Speaker, may we recognize the gentleman from the First District of Zambuanga City, the Honorable Celso Lobrigat.
The gentleman from the First District of Zambuanga City is recognized, the Honorable Celso Lobrigat.
Madam Speaker, may I ask the good gentleman from the First District of Davao if you would be willing to answer a few questions from the Congressman from the First District of Zambuanga?
It would be an honor and a pleasure, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. If you will recall, I think among the cities that have always been the target of bombings, kidnappings, and so forth, it is Zambuanga City. Does the gentleman from Davao agree?
Yes, Madam Speaker, unfortunately, Zambuanga City has borne the brunt of being one of the areas that is most often hit when terrorist groups wish to wreak havoc and sow fear and terror in the hearts of the Filipinos. I agree that Zambuanga City unfortunately and sadly suffers the most.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, it is basically because of our location, we are the highly urbanized city that faces the islands of Basilan, Tahu, Sulu, and Tawi-Tawi, and that is why when I was listening to your speech, and you said that we should not let fear rule our lives, I definitely agree with you, because every time there is such an incident, we have to admit that it is one step backward. But, as Mayor, I've always said, while it is painful to take one step backward, we have to take two, three, four, and more steps forward. In fact, in several bombing instances in Zambuanga when I was the Mayor, right after the SOCO and the military would more or less inspect the area, I would immediately order the cleaning up of the bombing scene immediately, so as to remove the scars. We don't want to live in fear, because if we constantly live in fear without firing a shot, the terrorist would have won the battle. And I was very, very happy when the Mayor of Davao said it is business as usual, because if we let, if we allow ourselves to be terrorized, to be traumatized, then the terrorist really would have won the battle. Do you agree?
I agree, Madam Speaker, and that is the reason why, as much as possible, we have been conducting business as usual in Davao. Classes have not been suspended or called off, people are back to work, the malls are open, commercial establishments are open, Madam Speaker, flights have not been canceled, and so we go on in the usual business and trade in Davao, and as much as possible, we have not changed the way we live in Davao even after the bombing incident on September 2, Madam Speaker.
Mrs. Speaker, if you recall, last week, our presiding officer delivered a privileged speech regarding the jail in Cebu. I think it was when Madam Speaker was Governor, was first elected Governor in 2004, that she had her baptism of fire in the very, very, a few months after she more or less became Governor, and what she said is that you can determine more or less the kind of leadership, not on the incident that happened, but how the official or officials respond to that incident. And I know it is less than 100 days that the President became, has become President, and, you know, it is a very, very painful incident that happened in Davao, but it is the response, not only of the officials of Davao, the people of Davao, but also the President, that shows what's tough that the Davaoyenios and the President is made of. Do you agree?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and in fact, I would like to report that the entire Davao community and the people of Davao have voiced out their full support to the President, President Duterte, and it is for this reason that I also encourage and call upon all my colleagues here as representatives of your respective districts and sectors to also voice your full support to the President. I think in this trying times, I think this is, this is the time when we must unite, set aside all our political differences, our political colors, and unite behind our leader, President Duterte, and show him our full support, and to show those with malevolent designs, and to show these terrorist organizations that we will not be, live in fear, that we will not be terrorized, we will not cower down to their threats, and that we stand united against them.
Normally, what follows after such an incident? You will have a lot of text mongering. There would be texts saying that there are sightings here, there are sightings there, there is a suspected bag left somewhere, and this further causes more fear and more panic. Learning from experience, the local government really has to take control of the situation right away. In fact, I recall after the hostage-taking in Nunez, which happened a few weeks after the Aquino administration took over, more or less, the government did not know how to But at least here, you can... But at least here, you can, you see that the President responded immediately and declared a state of not lawlessness, but lawless violence. In fact, after the hostage taking in Luneta, Secretary Jesse Robredo asked me to be a resource person in the Biyaeng DILG because more or less, we have had experiences in this regard. But the officials of Davao and the President more or less handled the situation, was was there at the scene. So he made sure that the people of the Philippines knew that he was on top of the situation. So, I, my, Madam Speaker, I really appreciate the speech of the gentleman from Davao. And I hope that all local officials will take heed on how to respond every time there is a crisis situation. Because right now, any and all major cities in the Philippines perhaps are targets. Do you agree?
Yes, Madam Speaker, in fact, I would like to thank the gentleman from Zambuanga City for his utmost confidence in the ability of President Duterte. I would just like to add that if there's any person who knows how to handle the situation, it is President Rody Duterte himself. And so, I have utmost confidence in his ability to rise above the situation, to make the proper decisions, to give the proper directives, and to handle the situation that is happening right now. And that is why I reiterate my call for everyone to support the President and share the same confidence that I have in him and share the same confidence that the Congressman from Zambuanga City shares as well. He's the right man for the job. And I think that over the course of time, we will see him handling the situation with precision, with accuracy, and with determination and fortitude, Madam Speaker.
So as I end, I just want to state what I stated in the beginning. This situation has forced everybody to take one step backward, but let us take two, three, four, five, even six steps forward. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Congressman Lobregat from Zambuanga City. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We thank the gentleman from Zambuanga City, the Honorable Celso Lobregat. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the gentleman from the First District of Lanau del Norte, the Honorable Khalid Dimoporo for his interpolation.
The Honorable Khalid Dimoporo is recognized.
Madam Deputy Speaker, may I ask if the Honorable Carlo Nogralles is willing to answer some questions from this representation?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it would be an honor and privilege.
First and foremost, Madam Speaker, I'd like to say that my deepest condolences on behalf of the people of Lanau del Norte for all of the families of the victims of the Davao blast that occurred last Friday night. Madam Speaker, unfortunately, in our side of Mindanao, we are somewhat accustomed to this. I've experienced the all-out war of Erap Estrada, the Mua AD debacle in Lanau del Norte, the bombings of Cagayan de Oro, the bombings in Iligan City, the bombing of our Iligan City Bridge. I've experienced it over and over and over again in my region. And that is the despair of the people when they look at us, our, their leaders, their local leaders, their national representatives, and they ask us, what are we going to do next? At the same time also, Madam Speaker, I experience it often, the feeling of anger, the feeling of hate, the need for vengeance in these areas where atrocities happen. So I'd like to ask the Honorable Carlo Nogralles, based on what you've heard from the good people of Davao, and also based on your opinion, where do we stand now as a country, as a nation? Will this be all-out war, so to speak, against terrorists that may be lurking in different corners of our country? Or is this a specific problem? The bombing was related to the war occurring in Sulu?
I think the strategy, Madam Speaker, is to surgical precision. As I said, we want to contain the battlefield to a small part of the country as much as possible. We want to contain our efforts against targeted organizations. We have to be precise in this approach so as not to disrupt the lives of ordinary Filipino citizens and civilians. It's not a declaration of war, but it is a it is a, an attempt to be very precise and accurate in our incision, in this surgical incision of removing a group that plagues the whole body, which is the Philippine Archipelago.
Thank you Congressman Nogralles, Madam Speaker. I would just like to make a manifestation now on two issues. Perhaps the national attempt to curb this problem of terrorism. And secondly, more or less, what the good Congressman Nogralles mentioned, the strategic, strategic approach to neutralize possibly the terrorists or the, the lawlessness in Sulu. First and foremost, you know, Madam Speaker, I pride myself in Mindanao that we have this abundance of cultural diversity. And it is my fear that if there will be a nationwide more or less movement to search for terrorists, it is so easy to stereotype your Muslim brothers and sisters. And it was my hope that we can also appeal to the nation as a whole for sobriety, that the perpetrator, that the majority of Muslim Filipinos are against this bombing that happened in Davao City. That is not a way of life, that is not in our religious belief. And as far as I am concerned, and I believe the rest of our Muslim Filipino legislators here are concerned, whoever is responsible for the bombings in Davao must go to hell. Secondly, regarding the strategic approach to maybe neutralize the threats to our nation there in Sulu, Basilan, I would like to appeal also to the Congressman Nogralles in his representation and also to the House of Representatives. Please, take a good look into the autonomous region of Muslim Mindanao, where there is a high incidence of poverty, where people still live on a day-to-day basis trying to survive. It's only natural that they are angry at the government. I'm not saying let's stop the government tactics there in Sulu, but at the same time also, we've seen it in Afghanistan, we've seen it in Iraq. The United States of America fielded in those areas. They brought war to Iraq, they brought war to Afghanistan only to pull out their troops in the next administration. We cannot succeed in war if our objective is only to neutralize enemies. We can only win in this war, this war of idealism, by winning the hearts of the people. And that's what I hope, that the general direction of our country will move forward towards after this incident in Davao City. Again, I stand with the good Congressman Carlo Nogralles and my countryman here in condoning what happened in Davao City. And on behalf of my Muslim legislators, your fellow countrymen, at the same time also, our prayers go to you, the Davauenios, that you will make it through these tough times and you will return the good city of Davao to what it was once before this bombing.
Dagang salamat sa tanan, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
We thank the Honorable Khalid Dimoporo for his powerful manifestation. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the gentleman from the Second District of South Cotabato. May we recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Ferdi Hernandez.
Before I respond to the queries of Deputy Speaker, Madam Speaker, I would just like to assure the Congressman from Lanau del Norte that if there is anyone who has the heart for Muslim brothers and sisters, it is the President because he has always prided himself in the fact that Muslim blood also runs in his veins. He can trace his ancestry to, to to our Muslim brothers and sisters. And so, if there's anyone who will not stereotype the Muslims, our brother Muslims and sisters, it would be the President. If there's anyone who understands the plight of our brother Muslims and sisters, especially in ARMM, it is the President. And that is why I said that we must be very precise in this surgical approach because we know that it is, the problem is contained only to a malevolent group of terrorists who have this warped sense of ideologies. And the, the approach of the President will be very targeted and precise against these terror cells and organization, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Nogralles. Deputy Speaker Ferdi Hernandez is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to ask questions, but I would like to read a manifestation of support to Congressman Nogralles, First District of Davao, to the victims, to Davao City, of course, to the President. And allow me, Madam Speaker, to read my, a short message of manifestation of support.
Yes, please go ahead, Deputy Speaker Hernandez.
I am joining the people of South Cotabato in condemning in the strongest terms the bombings, which claimed the lives of fourteen innocent, five of whom are from a district and endured more than seventy men and women, including children. We fully support our President's declaration of a state of lawlessness and nationwide in order to bring the perpetrators into the fold of the law. Terrorism is an act of cowardice. And such acts of barbarism will not coward the President, but will only strengthen his resolve in fighting criminality, lawlessness, war on drugs, and terrorism. The declaration of the state of lawlessness is not by any means intended to curtail the civil liberties of the citizen, but to safeguard the safety and the constitutional rights of the people. Remember that this declaration does not amount to an imposition of martial law. Legally, it would be treated as a precautionary measure that has factual basis in the reality of the Davao explosion. As Commander in Chief, our President is constitutionally mandated to protect the people from lawlessness. While our country mourns the victims of the recent tragedies, I call on every peace-loving Filipino to be vigilant against our enemies and those who would rather toward the goals of our government to achieve genuine peace, progress, and development towards a real change within the President Duterte's administration. That's all, Madam Chairman, and thank you Congressman Carlo Nogralles.
Madam Speaker, I also extend our heartfelt condolences and sympathies to the people of South Cotabato. As I understand it, the bodies of the constituents of the good Deputy Speaker have already been transported back to South Cotabato where they will be properly interred. So we share the same grief, Madam Speaker. It's not only the people of Davao that grieve for the loss of lives, but also those from other provinces, from neighboring provinces like South Cotabato, who came to Davao on that fateful night for rest and recreation and have come home to their provinces as corpses. And so, we must join together and put a stop to this nonsense, to these terroristic acts. And we must support this government, this administration, and our President in our joint effort to finally find the true peace and order in the land.
We thank Deputy Speaker Ferdi Hernandez for his manifestation as we extend condolences to his constituents. The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the gentleman from Bayan Muna. May we recognize the Honorable Carlos Zarate.
The Honorable Carlos Zarate from Bayan Muna is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand and I support the earlier privileged speech of my Kababayan Appropriations Chair, Carlo Nogralles. So instead of interpolating Congressman Nogralles, Madam Chair, with your kind indulgence and that of Congressman Nogralles, may I just read a short manifestation instead, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead, Congressman Zarate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bayan Muna condemns in the strongest terms this latest terroristic attack on our city, Davao City. We also extend our sympathies to the victims and their families. I stand with my fellow Davauenios in calling for justice to the victims of this cowardly and barbaric attack on helpless civilians. We call on the government, the Duterte administration, to use the full force of the law to bring to the bar of justice the perpetrators of this cowardly and dastardly crime. We also call on the Filipino people to be vigilant as the Davao blast could be used by undemocratic elements to ferment more chaos and sabotage, especially the ongoing peace initiatives by the Duterte administration and the revolutionary groups, the Moro Islam Revolution Front, the Moro National Revolution Front, as well as with the National Democratic Front. Again, Madam Speaker, we commensurate with the families of the victims in this, in their times of grief, especially now. Dagang salamat, Madam Speaker, and thank you to Congressman Nogralles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank the representative from Bayan Muna. We share in his grief, him also being a resident and a true son of Davao City.
We say dagang salamat to Congressman Carlos Zarate of Bayan Muna for his manifestation of condemnation for the Davao blast and sympathy for the families of its victims. and sympathy for the families of its victims. The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Carlo Nogralas to the Committee on Rules for the Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The speech of the Honorable Carlo Nogralas, including its interpolation and the subsequent manifestations, are hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. We thank the Honorable Carlo Nogralas for a very timely privileged speech, even as we sympathize with the families of the victims, primarily on the Night Market Blast that happened in your beloved city. May we also express our heartfelt felicitations for the celebration of your 40th birthday last Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It is a bittersweet moment for me, and I thank our colleagues who have extended their sympathies. Rest assured that your message of support and sympathies and condolences will be extended to the families, the victims of the Davao blast. In fact, I will be flying to Davao tomorrow for the day, but the deliberations in the Committee on Appropriations will still proceed as follows. I just want to spend the day with our, with the victims of the Davao blast and extend all of your messages of support, sympathies, and condolences. And I'll be back on Wednesday to continue with my job here at the House of Representatives. Once again, dagang salamat, may angabi isitanan.
Dagang salamat, Congressman Carlo Nogralas. The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we terminate the privileged hour.
There's a motion to terminate the privileged hour? Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, before we part ways, I move that we refer the following resolutions in aid of legislation to the following committees. I will read the House resolutions by their number and by the committees to which they are being referred to. Number one, to the Committee on Ways and Means. Number two, likewise, Ways and Means. Number three, National Defense and Security. Number four, Justice. Number six, Local Government. Number seven, Housing and Urban Development. Number eight, National Defense and Security. 14, Transportation. 19, Public Works and Highways. 20, Health. 27, Agrarian Reform. 28, Human Rights. 29, Public Works and Highways. 30, Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources. 33, Committee on Energy. 35, Health. 36, Transportation. 39, Banks and Financial Intermediaries. 41, Natural Resources. 43, Natural Resources. 44, Cooperatives Development. 46, Ways and Means. 47, Dangerous Drugs. 48, Agriculture and Food. 49, Human Rights. 50, Agrarian Reform. 53, Veterans Affairs and Welfare. 54, National Defense and Security. 58, Health. 61, Public Order and Safety. 63, Overseas Workers Welfare. 64, Government Enterprises. 67, Transportation. 68, Natural Resources. 69, Trade and Industry. 70, Labor and Employment. 71, Bicol Recovery and Economic Development. 72, Natural Resources. 73, High Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education. 74, Higher and Technical Education. 75, Basic Education and Culture. 80, Public Works and Highways. 85, Energy. 94, Women and Gender Equality. 95, Energy. 96, Welfare of Children. 98, Appropriations. 99, Housing and Urban Development. 100, Information and Communications Technology. 102, Higher and Technical Education. 104, Energy. 105, Justice. And 116, Housing and Urban Development. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the 53 resolutions to the appropriate committees. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, September 6, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Session is adjourned until tomorrow, the 6 of September, Tuesday, 4 o'clock.